... School District Order for May, sorry, March, March 14th, 2016. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
... United States of America and to the world for which you stand, one nation under God and universal liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to have a moment of prayer for two officials from the City of Scranton that passed on in the path in the last week, and that is our honorable Mayor James Fair and Melty, and our consummate William Gary. I'd like to have a moment of prayer for those individuals. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to ask Principal Robert Genoezza to come up and say a few words, Principal, or we should say, well, you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Welcome, Scranton School Board, to West Scranton High School, recognized by U.S. News and World Report as one of the best high schools. On behalf of the entire West Scranton community, I would like to thank the school board for the support you continue to give our high school, and consideration given to the students, faculty, and staff who walk the same marble halls as many of their parents and grandparents walked. We here at West are very proud of our school and all it represents. Your unwavering support is greatly appreciated. Please feel free to tour our building and notice many of our students who are on hand performing in extracurricular activities and who are here just to lend a helping hand while you visit. At this time, I am proud to introduce our student council, who will present to you a small token of our appreciation for everything that you do for us. I am proud to announce, Mrs. Lutz, our choral band instructor, who will have the members of our chorus sing the National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so brightly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous tides For the red parts we watch Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there, oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free And the home of the brave.
Again, thank you for allowing us to host this school board meeting, and I hope you enjoy your visit.
On behalf of the chorus, we would like to thank the students for the gifts and for the chorus for that support. Okay, roll call. Mr. Casey?
Present.
Mr. Doye?
Present.
Mr. Duffy?
Present.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. Tillman?
Present.
Mr. Sheridan?
Present.
Nine present. Thank you. We're gonna wave the rules again, and we have some things to do. Mr. McAndrew, would you read the resolution for the crossing guards? We just had a real nice display over in the gym for the crossing guards, and we'd like to read the resolutions off. Director McAndrew?
Yes, members of the board, school directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Public Relations Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas thousands of Scranton School District students are assisted by crossing guards as they make their way to school each, every day, and whereas the well-being of our students is the utmost importance, and these devoted individuals are on the front line safeguarding them from danger, and whereas these men and women bring many hazards in service to our students and school community in their critical role, and whereas it is important that our stakeholders acknowledge the commitment and sacrifice these crossing guards make on behalf of the Scranton School District community. And now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the entire Scranton School District, the Board of Education greatly recognizes the vital services provided by school crossing guards. Respectfully submitted.
Here in a second, under question. Uh, here in a question, roll call. Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Doye?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine pervert. We're waving the rules again, and we may be having some presentations for some students. Department of Education, Director Doye?
Members of the board of school directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Public Relations Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Board of School Directors is always eager to recognize students who have distinguished themselves academically and in extracurricular activities, and whereas Greg Madyevich, an outstanding sophomore student at West Scranton High School, placed third in 2014's Keystone State Games in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and whereas Greg Madyevich's third place finish allowed him entry into the National State Games of America that were held in Lincoln, Nebraska this past summer, and whereas Greg Madyevich finished in eleventh place in the under twenty boys division, which included participants from all fifty states, and whereas Greg Madyevich looks forward to continuing his stellar bowling and academic successes throughout his career at West Scranton High School. And now therefore be resolved that the official congratulations of the Board of Education is extended to Greg Madyevich, his parents Peter and Sandra Madyevich, and the bowling coaches at Southside Land, respectfully submitted.
Here, here in a second, under the question. Any's on question, roll call. Mr. Doye?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine pervert. We're waving the rules again, we have a presentation to present to Officer Betschkowski. March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, whereas the Scranton School Board of Directors wishes to thank Officer Richard Betschkowski for his years of service to the Scranton School Board and citizens of the City of Scranton, therefore may be resolved that the Scranton School Board officially honors Officer Richard Betschkowski and appreciates his dedication to the school board and the residents of the City of Scranton. Respectfully submitted. Any second? Any question? No question, roll call. Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Doye?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine pervert.
Nonparticular service to the city of Scranton and Scranton School District. Thank you very much.
Waving the rules again, Scranton's Athletic Stadium, Director Casey?
Members of the Department of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Athletic Stadium Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Board of School Directors is always eager to recognize students who have distinguished themselves academically and in extracurricular activities, and whereas Maria Coin, an outstanding senior student at West Scranton High School, had scored her one thousandth career point for West Scranton varsity basketball program on Saturday, December nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Maria is the eighth girl in West Scranton who has basketball program history to accomplish this feat, and whereas Maria Coin has been...
Maria.
Sorry, Maria Coin has been a member of the girls varsity basketball team at West Scranton High School for the past four seasons. Maria is also the captain of the Lady Invaders basketball team, and whereas Maria Coin was selected as the Scranton Time Stadium Athlete of the Week on Monday, December twenty-first for earning her one thousand career point, and whereas Maria is a member of the National Honor Society of West Scranton High School and is also a member of the varsity softball team, captain of the varsity football cheerleading team, track and field team, scholastic pole team, and is also a member of the Exceptional Children's Aid, Spanish, Red Cross, SAV, Student Council Secretary, Spirit Club Secretary, Peer Mediation, Art, and Yearbook Clubs, and whereas Maria will attend Penn State University's main campus and will study communications as a major, and now therefore be a result that the official congratulations of the Board of Education is extended to Maria Coin, her parents Jerry and Marie Coin, and her teachers and coaches at West Scranton High School. Respectfully submitted.
Any second, under question. Yes, President Sheridan, I'd like to just say for one minute, where does this girl find time to play basketball? God love her, and congratulations, what a, what a profile. God bless. Roll call. Graduate Jerry and Marie for a great job, for a great kid. Thank you. Anybody else have any question?
I would also like to congratulate the family, the great friends of mine and neighbors and the great people, the job.
On behalf of the whole board, we'd like to congratulate you, thank you, thank you for your service. Roll call. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Doye?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine pervert. It is the day two.
Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Athletic Stadium Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Board of School Directors is always eager to recognize students who have distinguished themselves academically and in extracurricular activities, whereas James Forsetti, an outstanding senior student at West Scranton High School, has earned his one hundredth career victory in wrestling on Wednesday, December ninth, two thousand and fifteen. James is the eighteenth wrestler in West Scranton program history to accomplish this feat, and whereas James Forsetti has been a member of the wrestling team at West Scranton High School for the past four seasons. James is also the captain of the wrestling team, and whereas James Forsetti was selected as the Scranton Time Stadium Athlete of the Week on Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, for earning his one hundredth career victory in wrestling, and whereas James Forsetti is also a member of the Spanish club in Siqueira, and whereas James Forsetti has applied to the University of Scranton and will major in criminal justice, and now therefore be a result that this, that the official congratulations of the Board of Education is extended to James Forsetti, his parents Mike and Melissa Forsetti, and his teachers and coaches at West Scranton High School. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Here in a second, under question. Under question, roll call. Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesch?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Doye?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine pervert. Okay, we're gonna go back to public speakers, and first on, the list is Rosemary Rollins, Scranton Federation Teachers.
Excuse me, Mr. President, Communications to the Board, number two.
I just wanted to make sure that it's good.
Okay. Executive sessions were held on Wednesday, February seventeenth, Monday, February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, to discuss personnel litigation, labor relations, and everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we do go to public speaking, we're gonna go to reports from student representatives, West Scranton High School.
Good evening, School Direct, good evening, School Directors, Superintendent Carrion, and all of our guests this evening, and welcome to West Scranton High School. My name is Brian Martin, and I am president of the West Scranton High School Student Council, and with me this evening is Cassie Merrill, the senior class president. We want to thank you very much for holding a meeting here in our beautiful auditorium this evening, and we look forward to telling you the many great accomplishments happening here at West.
Firstly, our senior class is performing at outstanding levels in the college application process. We are proud to announce that this year's seniors have been accepted to fifty-nine colleges and universities as of today to continue their academic pursuits. This is the highest number of post-secondary acceptances from our school in recent memory. Senior Leo Chulo recently received an appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Senior Dylan Harre received an athletic scholarship at the Holy Cross College to play football in the fall. Senior Bryce Yanning received a full tuition Board of Governors scholarship to West Hester University, and Senior Brian Martin received a full tuition Presidential Scholarship at the University of Scranton. We have also had several students need admission to the Culinary Institute of America, Jonathan and Wales University, to pursue culinary studies in the Antonetti School of Art and Design to further their outstanding abilities. In addition, three members of our class have enlisted with the United States Marine Corps and nine have enlisted with the United States Army.
Several athletes have made a very large positive impact during the winter sports season. Senior Maria Coin scored one thousandth point during the Lady Invaders basketball season, and Senior Jimmy Forsetti earned his one hundredth victory during the wrestling season. In addition to this, Junior Michael Bruna won the district diving competition and will soon compete at the state level. The boy, our boys' basketball team recently advanced into the state playoff round, and Junior Bubanovak won wrestling districts in his weight class. Now that the spring sports season has kicked off, we hope to report similar accomplishments at the conclusion of this season. In addition to these individual honors attained by West Scranton High School student athletes, our school itself was awarded as the recipient of the two thousand and sixteen Woke Kio Sports Character Award.
Our high school recently hosted a blood drive to benefit the Red Cross Club. West Scranton students and faculty donated forty-six pints of blood to this worthy cause and helped one hundred and thirty-eight local patients. Last week, our school held a community outreach assembly to achieve student body on prescription drug use protection and positive youth tourism, which inspired students with an inspirational message about drug and alcohol prevention, with health for freshmen and sophomores.
We are currently in the middle of our second round of dual enrollment here at West. This program allows students to gain college credits for the classes they take throughout high school. On Thursday this week, our school will compete in a computer fair held at Keystone College, and on Friday, West will compete in the Engineering Olympics held at Willows University. We hope to improve on our second place overall finish in this, in this competition last year.
On March fourteenth, we hosted our semi-formal at Jeanette and Manu Dixon City, and we regret to say that none of you were able to make it to the dance floor of that evening. The SAT was administered on March fifth, and our school sponsor built a math and reading workshop for interested students in order to improve their scores. We recently held a dress down day to benefit the district-wide Special Olympics, and we were able to raise over six hundred dollars for this worthy cause.
We are also sponsoring a Read Across America event here at West Scranton on March thirtieth. Several classes from Willard Elementary School, where we have been invited, come on that day. Several groups from our school, March and this week's St. Patrick's Day parade, including our band, cheerleaders, and the drama club.
In addition to all of this, there is a great number of events quickly approaching. Our drama club will perform Young Frankenstein on November fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. We would like to invite each of you to attend at this production to appreciate the hard work and effort of our students.
Spirit Week at West Scranton will kick off on Sunday, April seventeenth, and will conclude on Friday, April twenty-second. We also hope to see you at the many of our upcoming sporting events this season.
Lastly, we would like to sincerely thank you for your time this evening, and we wish to leave you with one last thought, that West is best.
Report from the PSDA, Representative Director Doye?
I think it is time, Mr. Sheridan.
Solicitor's report, Attorney Tom Minar?
I think it is time, Mr. President.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Pearson?
I will port on my remarks tonight in the interest of time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now go back to public comment, Rosemary Rollins, Scranton Federation Teachers, roll call.
Good evening, Directors, that's a hard act to follow. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the membership of the Scranton Federation of Teachers to congratulate the teachers, the paraprofessionals, all staff here at Scranton, Scranton, West Scranton High School, and particularly the fine students who have been here this evening and demonstrated their musical talent, and I'm glad we haven't cut that out of the curriculum. I wish to congratulate Karen Lutz on that fine performance with our students and especially the student representatives here tonight for their wonderful public speaking and the pride they show in their school, that's to be commended, and I'm glad, well, I was a little disappointed though when the student just explained that none of you went to the dance floor, that's, that's not nice, you should have gone dancing with them. So, following that, I wish to remind this board that the Scranton Federation of Teachers has filed twelve arbitrations against the Scranton School District, some of which have been settled and some of which have not been settled. I know, Director Duffy, you'd like to comment on the fact that the Scranton City Police Department and Fire Department's had to file these arbitrations, and we just noted in the newspaper last week, the kind of money we're talking about, and the millions of dollars that didn't help the city at all, and had that action not had to be taken by the City of Scranton and had common sense prevailed, I don't think we'd be in the hole we are in in this Scranton city. I hope this board isn't going to follow in that step. We also have right now approximately twelve unheard grievances by this board. Now, how does that happen exactly? Well, I have in my hand the collective bargaining agreement that you've signed as the Board of School Directors, your names are in there, you were given copies of this book. It seems almost impossible for me to think that in the school district where I as a teacher and my colleagues have to give third graders, fourth graders, fifth and high school students PSSA exams and Keystone exams where their reading comprehension skills are tested, and I can't get anybody to read correctly this book. This is not complicated, these are not complex sentences, they're straightforward sentences, no fancy language, very easy to read, and yet, week after week, day after day, the union is contacted because grievances are occurring daily and we have to fire them. The latest grievance, the latest grievance involves two articles in this book. These are not new articles, these are old articles in this book, and they've been with us a long time. One of the people in this district phoned me the other day and questioned whether or not I knew it was twenty sixteen. Well, after I heard the impertinent remark, I would advise the person who gave me that phone call to know, yes, I'm quite aware that it's twenty sixteen. There's absolutely nothing wrong with the union president's ability to comprehend the year, nor is there anything wrong with her reading ability, nor is there anything wrong with her leadership skills. So, how is it possible that there's an article in this book that eight times, eight, eight times in one book, article, in one art, the word principal is used with a capital P? How's that possible that anybody could miss it? How's that possible that anybody could misinterpret that? It isn't possible, and yet it was done. We take offense that that would be deliberate. I don't take it lightly, nor do any of the 900 members of our local. There's another article in this book. It talks about classroom interruptions. Again, a very old article. It talks about the fact that the public address system, monitors, cameras, et cetera, cannot be used to evaluating teachers. Your probably sitting there, some of you especially, who are young, would say, what is that? What do you mean? Well, there wasn't time in this district when principals sat in their office, turned on this intercom system, which is supposed to be used to communicate with the classroom teacher, and instead of doing that, they sat in their office and they used that intercom system to perform a classroom observation, and they used it. Thus, the article in the book. This book has historic significance. Each of these articles has a reason for being in here. This isn't a fluke, and we take exception that day after day, this book is violated, causing us right now to be at grievance 13 and 12 arbitrations. This is incredible in this district where I taught my whole life. I left my school in Southside to become union president. There was not one grievance ever filed in that school. This isn't right. So, now begin tomorrow, the Scranton Federation of Teachers will file again for grievance arbitration. We are costing out right now, at best, over $14,000 of our union money to file grievance arbitration. And as anybody knows who's ever done this job, that means you didn't pay that much too, and it just keeps on going. Now, I'm not sure that we're ever going to get to the $21 million that Scranton has, but if we keep on this course, this isn't going to be successful, because you're losing. You're losing at grievance arbitration, because the arbitrator takes the book, and if the article is here and it's clear, the article is sustained. This is not a tricky book, but it's a historic record of how many times in this district grievances had to be filed and finally articles written. My job is to protect and defend this contract, and I intend to continue to do that until my members tell me differently. This is going to stop, one way or the other. Next, I would like you to know that this morning, I was reading through the Philadelphia Inquirer. As most of you know, I'm the executive vice president of the state American Federation of Teachers, Pennsylvania, so my job is to know what's going on in Pittsburgh, all the way over to Philadelphia, and all points in between. That's part of my job. And in that Philadelphia Inquirer article, I saw a person's name that I've heard bantered about around here, and I read the article carefully today, and it's talking about the fact that wealth in excess of $7.2 million was misspent in federal grant money. That article is yours for the reading. All you have to do is go and Google the Philadelphia Inquirer and put in the name Paul Vowles, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I would caution this board, before we hire anybody, a plain Google search might be appropriate. I have lots to do during the day. I have a lot of reading to do, lots to keep up on. I would ask you to share that load with me and start doing a little heavy-duty research. I think it's time, past time. I would also like to take this opportunity to remind this board that not so long ago, and I hope I don't misspeak here, but I believe Director Duffy asked for a motion to be passed, and I believe it was passed, and it had to do with contracts in excess of $10,000. And I'm waiting to see exactly how the board acts in accordance with that motion that was passed by this board. Several others of your motions and policies have been passed, but it seems that the lady who knows it's 2016 is also aware of those policies. Maybe others don't keep track of them? Well, I do. So, I would encourage all of you to please make sure the policies that you pass as a school board are not relegated to the garbage heap unless you intend to replace them by a 9-0 law. Thank you for your time.
Andrew Skol. Kevin Kayes, Scranton Federation Teachers, City legislature.
Good evening, directors and administrators. I'm here on the first issue as a taxpayer, and I kind of piggyback on what Rosemary was calling to your attention regarding grievances and arbitrations that have been filed. There are 12 arbitrations. I believe only a couple of them have been resolved, and the ones that have been resolved have cost the district thousands of dollars. I don't think that the others will cost us any less, and the arbitrator's fees are rather high. I believe, having looked at these cases, that most of these grievances, these arbitrations, really, if the board had heard the cases, probably could've laid waste to them in within an hour or two. They're very simple cases, very easy for you to understand, and very straightforward. So, I would encourage the board to ask your Labor Committee, Labor Relations Committee, to hold a session so that we don't have to go to arbitration on all these, so that the district saves thousands of dollars in the process. The next issue I'd like to address is something I noticed in your agenda for the night, showing something about busing. There are two members of the board, Directors Schuster and Director Timlin, who may or may not be aware of this issue, so I ask the others who have heard me go on ad nauseam about this issue to bear with me, but I just want to bring this to your attention once again. Two auditor generals, Jack Wagner and Eugene DeBisquale, who have back-to-back two-year performance audits, have very highlighted overpayment over the state formula for busing, over the state allowance for busing. They highlighted that in 06, '07 school year, $1.5 million overpayment was made. In '07, '08, another $1.5 million of overpayment was made. In the '08, '09 school year, $2.3 million of overpayment, and in the '09, '10 school year, $1.9 million of overpayment. From your audits, your own Scranton School District audits, we've seen double-digit inflation every year since then, to the point where in 2013, there was $4.2 million spent, which is likely at least $2 million over this state formula that is suggested by the state. If the auditors are correct, both of them who are in agreement are correct, over a 10-year period, it's likely that we spent $20 million more than we should have. So, unless you're getting a really good deal, the improvement, the approving of another contract with any of the current contracts, I think would be more than costly to this district. It's, to me, outrageous that we're spending that kind of money over what the state is suggesting that we spend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kayes. Is it Nick, excuse me, Siemens, Simmons? He skips us, you can come here.
Good evening, board of directors. Hopefully, I'll be a little quicker this evening. At the end of last year, the board approved a loan to keep the district afloat and avoid bankruptcy. We're all very appreciative that the district was able to avoid bankruptcy, the nightly good thing. Involved in that loan were fees totaling $60,000 for Attorney Menora, which at his approved rate of $85 an hour comes out to something on the order of 800 hours of time spent working on that one particular topic. I'd like to know if anyone on the board asked for or received any substantiating information to back up that incredibly large amount of money associated with one specific project. I see you've done me the courtesy of reply, so I take your silence as you probably intended. So, thank you for your rudeness this evening. I'll return my seat and hope you finish the rest of the meeting rather than. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Vince Wagner, Scranton Federation Teachers.
Good evening, directors. Vince Wagner, third vice president of Scranton Federation of Teachers and a faculty member here at West Grant High School. I noticed on the agenda that I believe you intend to approve a school district calendar for the next two years, and I just wanted to say, I'm a teacher of advanced placement European history, and I had to speak up urging you to try to start school before Labor Day, if at all possible. The AP exams are in early May, and any time, any extra instructional time we can get toward the beginning of the year would be greatly, greatly appreciated. If we can have teachers, and for our in-services and students in school before Labor Day, it would be very, very helpful. I think maybe one of the concerns is the end of a contract August 31st. There have been years in the past we have started school earlier than that. That's not an issue. That shouldn't be an issue in this case. So, I'm just urging you, I wouldn't be doing my duty, all of my students are with AP. We need that instructional time. I urge you to reexamine and try to start school as early as we can, maybe a week before Labor Day. That would be greatly appreciated. And just one more thing, I agree, something that was said before, the arbitrations, the grievances that we're forced to file, they should be heard at the board level. A lot of money would be saved, not only for the union, but for the taxpayers, for the city of Scranton, because fees come from both sides, and there's just no reason why it has to go to an arbitrator all the time. Those fees are much, much more. So, if you heard them on the board level, a lot of money could be saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. That exhaust the public comment. Is there anybody out there that would not sign up that would like to speak tonight? I've seen anybody on the side of the agenda. Eleven consent agenda, items 11 through 13. 214? 214. Do I hear a motion to pass this?
I'd like to hear a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
You're in the second, under the question. No question, roll call.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
None of them.
Education Director Wright.
It is the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the education committee of the Scranton School District that the attached instructional school calendar for the 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018 school years be approved. The calendars include the five designated district holidays, specifically Columbus Day, General Election, Veterans Day, Presidents' Day, and Martin Luther King Day, respectfully submitted.
Second. You're in the second, under the question.
Under the question, after hearing the, I guess, idea starting earlier, is there any reason provided an answer earlier to accommodate for the AP testing for students? I don't know.
I could think of one. Air conditioning, in autism, that we don't have at West Grant, South intermediate, Northeast intermediate, and six elementary schools. I mean, that would be my only concern, is the heat. Other than that, it's a great area.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Would anybody else like to at least table this, to entertain the idea of?
Is there any deadline on PDE?
That's the only question I have, is the deadline.
Yeah, by April, I have to submit this to PDE.
Some of the March.
And I'm asking for a two-year calendar, and so there would be contract issues coming to the second year.
Are you making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table to create a special meeting March 28th.
Motion's been heard.
Second?
Second.
Under the question, this is for a motion for table D... Six, right?
D5.
D5. Okay, roll call.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
D6, Mr. Wright.
It is the recommendation of the education committee and the superintendent that the following be approved, whereas in an effort to ensure the district's financial solvency and its desire to enter into a contract with the School Improvement Partnership, and whereas this contract will result in a long-term fiscal recovery plan that includes a comprehensive budget review, preliminary operations, and staffing review, an instructional plan program alignment consistent with the goals of the Scranton School District's academic strategic plan, and the strategy for securing additional financial and human resources through securing federal, state, and private financial resources the district is eligible to receive, as well as entering into a strategic partnership with colleges, universities, businesses, and other government entities. Therefore, may it resolve that Scranton School District Board of Directors has previously reviewed documents detailing the scope of the contract and approves this partnership, respectfully submitted.
Second. Under the question, under the question. No, we hear no question, roll call. Mr. Casey?
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mrs. Olesky?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Timlin?
No.
Mr. Sheridan?
No.
Seven to motion.
D7, early college opportunity. Dwight?
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the education committee to accept early college opportunity for Scranton High School and West Grant High School students in partnership with the Zern County Community College, pilot year 2016, 2017 mathematics, respectfully submitted.
You're in the second, under the question. No, we hear no question, roll call.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine of them.
D8, Dr. Dwight. D8.
It is the recommendation of the education committee to enter into a five-year lease agreement with Dixon Avenue LLC to lease property at 530 Electric Street to relocate the Monticello and Lincoln Jackson Academy facilities, respectively submitted.
Second.
You're in the second, under the... You're in the second, under the question.
On the question, I do have a question. Um, I'm definitely in favor of this, uh, this venture as long as it is approved by the PDE. In the last conversation, I didn't get confirmation on that.
We did get writing from the PDE today that that is an acceptable, uh, move.
Also, did we get a writing on that, the former Monticello site? That, that lease would be satisfactory?
Yes, we have received that in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I just have one question. Um, moving to, from building to building, it's a great location, um, it's going to benefit, I think, our students tremendously. It's, it's huge, it's one floor, and it's got many more academic and workforce-related, uh, opportunities. But I just have one question for things of replacement for the life of the building, i.e. doors and windows. Are, are we going to be responsible for paying for the replacement? No, not likely.
Mr. Jeff.
We are not responsible for nothing.
Okay.
How do you want us to take care of that?
Thank you.
I think it's an excellent idea because it includes all, uh, especially in, in also, I think, the skills, uh, education is right there, and it would be accessible by all the buildings.
Yes.
And just to put the side out, this will be a brand new facility.
Yes. I, I think that's an excellent idea, and puts everything on, on one side, and, uh, it's a, it's a move forward for us.
And to your question, uh, the Center for Independent Living will be partnering with us, um, to provide life skills for our students.
Good, good job. Okay, and, uh, we do the roll call then? Yes? Yes, I see you. We roll call, okay. I've been done on the question. Anybody else have a question? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Anything else under, uh, Education, or DuYay? I'm going to slide.
Mr. Sheridan.
Personnel, Director Duffy.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Personnel Committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, reservation, and meetings of absence be approved, respectfully submitted.
And, we're here in second?
Heck.
You're in the second, under the question. Now, here, any question, roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Mr. Duffy, late two.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School, excuse me, members of the Board of Directors, City of Scranton, these employees have completed the last three years of professional service with satisfactory ratings for achieving the status of professional employee under the school code. It is the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the professional contracts be issued to the following individuals: Nicole Gordon Roberts, Jeff Boris, Tom Ryan, Jessica Kohler Scheller, Lindsay Courant, Caitlin Dockerty Anderson, Catherine Idol, Abigail Finch, Lauren Fukowski, Keith Downoski, Ellen Galco, Kelsey Gretz Rinty, Adrian Gwynn Orger, Elizabeth Kettler, Mara King, Ellen Malone, Robert McCleod, Matthew McShale, Catherine Orton, Jennifer Maggie, Mary Nicole McHale, Nicole Nicholas Meehan, Lahe Olson, Jessica Penn Ice, Lori Ryan, Edward Roach, Frank Spager, Justin Stevens, Emily Walsh, Caitlin Walsh, Matthew Laszlolets, Suzanne Wyder, and I believe that's it.
I'm going to, you're in the second, under the question.
The question, Mr. Sheridan, would you like to congratulate all thirty-two of our young professionals on their permanent certification and appointment?
And you, you, Director DuYay, you have any questions? I'm here. Roll call.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Anything else under, uh, personnel, Director Duffy?
Nothing else, time is up.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Director DuYay?
Yes, Mr. President. M one, the members of the Board of Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Buildings and Grounds Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Scranton School Board recognizes the importance of maximizing the use of Scranton School District existing faculties for students of the Scranton School District, and whereas the Scranton School Board recognizes the importance of accurate enrollment and area analysis, evaluating boundaries, and determining demographic population changes, and therefore be resolved, the Scranton School Board accepted a proposal for demographic service from Davis Demographics and Plain Incorporated for a comprehensive ten-year demographic study as per attached detailed cost and company profile previously provided for your review, respectfully submitted.
And second, under the question.
On the question, I'd like to, I see some different prices here, but I find it a whole place. Could you give me the total price of this?
The total price, you get twenty-five thousand dollars.
Would anyone else have any question? I'm going to, that, uh, roll call.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Timlin?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
By four motion asks.
M two, members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the Buildings and Grounds Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be resolved that the Buildings and Grounds Committee request permission to authorize the Plumble Group to prepare all necessary documents and specifications for the project to upgrade fire doors and emergency lights in West Grant, respectfully submitted.
Second.
You're in the second, under the question.
Just for clarification, is this, this is a, we're going to pick this out? This is building around to bring it out today?
Yes, and just to clarify something, uh, we did have a, a, a vulnerable bad, uh, in this building. Our company responded, they found some deficiencies, uh, so we're going to change the door closure, we're going to add numbers where we're missing, but one thing under the emergency lights, uh, emergency backlights and emergency lights are going to be performed by our electrician house. We've already begun that, we'll do that in-house at all costs, you know, other than our, our labor. And it's actually, uh, trying to get it done, just, you know, for part of it, so it's possible. We've most advertised once already, it'll be bid, and it'd be probably for the board to vote on it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
M four.
M four, members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the Buildings and Grounds Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be resolved that the Buildings and Grounds Committee request permission to authorize the purchase of two twenty-sixteen FSD vehicles to CoStar, at the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, each including options as per attached, respectfully submitted.
Second. You're in the second, under the question.
Mr. President, just, just a note, uh, this is to replace two vehicles which we have been told will not pass inspection anymore, uh, two of which do have plows, one also had a spread. So, these are two pickups with, with, uh, salt box in them, uh, and that's for two reasons. Uh, the wood more expensive, but now we don't have to buy bags of spread at our parking lot and buy bulk, uh, as we do with our bigger trucks, so this, this will save us a couple different things.
So, they're too essential, that's it?
Yes.
Anything under the question, anyone else have any question?
Signal CoStar, is it possible to get the other prices on these two trucks?
It is, but CoStar is, is the, is where, uh, all units filed by, uh, because it's our, uh, purchasing agreements with the state, uh, and they're pretty much by economy, and these, these trucks are, here, we're going to buy, you know, the package, probably another twelve or fifteen grand.
Uh, Mr. Schuster, to assure you, I have a number of police drivers who do, who show, uh, CoStar for, or are police vehicles and are touring vehicles, and, uh, Mr. Phil right there is about the low price.
Yeah, no, no, it's the same, it's the same price for his car. Yeah, it's the same. Is it possible to buy the CoStars?
Sorry, I, I didn't have a question.
Any questions?
Yes, i- is it possible to put this out to bid, get a low price, and go buy the CoStars? Is this a, is this a price? It was already bid by the state.
It, it was, it was bid by the state, we, we cancel it. I, I think that's like a duplication, and it's going to cost us probably a thousand dollars in advertising. I mean, I don't know where the board wishes to be, this is about the cheapest of deals. And the, the, the purchasing decree with the state with CoStars is not only school districts, but it's cities, municipalities, counties, and the state, the state sets that price, and they have to meet a qualified vendor in order to even compete in that program. And one of the things about the school, uh, as prior law enforcement, I agree with, you know, President Sheridan, when I was with Scranton Regional, that's how we purchased the law, everything went through the book. I think you have to, I don't want to say for sure, because I don't know, but I've never heard it done any other way other than a local vendor donating, or things of that nature. I don't know if we can go after people asking to donate, uh, other than that, I think the price is going to be the price.
Yeah.
At least they patrol vehicles, I'm sure. I will, I will say, well, I, I can tell you, uh, two vehicles we purchased a number of years ago, they were actually, they, they all come in as a plane's aim, and then they all fit in as police vehicles or, or vehicle. Uh, the one, our, our, our last purchases were out of mine road bill. Uh, I, I, I thought maybe if we go to give it to a local dealer here, it would kind of give us a little more, more, uh, service and power.
You're right, and then when it's built, bought under the government policy like that of the CoStars, their equipment is just a heavy-duty HDs, they're built for municipal government, and, and if anybody doesn't know what the CoStars are, it's, it's their, uh, system, they go through the state for to get the lowest price, and it's been through the state to, uh, have municipalities, school districts, uh, get the best deal for the property. So, I, I think it's, it's a, a good deal. Uh, anybody else have a question? Not roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
M five, members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the Buildings and, the Buildings and Grounds Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be resolved that the Buildings and Grounds Committee request permission to authorize Peter's Design Group to prepare all necessary documents and specifications for step-replacing project at front entrance of West Grant High School, respectfully submitted.
Second. You're in the second, under the question.
I have the same question as you. This is, this is going out to bid.
This will go out to bid. We're, we're developing specs right now, uh, in the front of this building, the top set of stuff are either granite or, or marble, we're replacing a whole five section, which we've been repairing every summer, trying to get the gradations. There, there's water behind it, and it just keeps picking out, to be honest.
Thank you.
But part of this also, and it was requested, uh, Mr. General Lesh, upon his longer plan, also the, uh, the brick pillars in front of the building will be cut down, trimmed, and capped with limestone caps, as it looks now, it's, it's, they're pretty, pretty well shot, and they'll all be repaired and capped.
I, I just want to, just for the record, if states right here on our, our itinerary here, for every one of these resolutions that I've been speaking about, it says authorized to bid out, authorized to bid out, authorized to bid out. So, I mean, I think that answers the question quite clearly, especially when it says necessary documents and specifications. I mean, I, you only need those documents if you're going to bid something out.
That's just for clarification, Mr. Lesh.
Well, you got it.
You got it.
Very soon.
Okay. Any other question, roll call.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
D six, members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the Buildings and Grounds Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be resolved that the Buildings and Grounds Committee request permission to authorize Peter's Design Group to prepare all necessary documents and specifications for the retaining wall repair or replacement project at the administration building lower port of LA, respectfully submitted.
Second.
You're in the second, under the question.
Also, the same question, please.
Yes, that's, I, I meant with our engineer, uh, next time you're in a parking lot, the last couple months, especially a month ago, we had a real heavy rain. Uh, it is, it's, in that, Chase, with the rain estimate, they, it involves every, every day, so we're looking to proceed with this as fast as we can, trying to get it up.
Anything else have any question, roll call.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
M seven, members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, the Buildings and Grounds Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the Buildings and Grounds Committee request permission to authorize the Peter's Design Group, Design Group, to prepare all necessary documents and specifications for the retaining wall replacement project at Prescott Elementary School, respectfully submitted.
Second. You're in the second, under the question.
Other than putting it out, Mr. Sheridan, uh, sorry to say, I don't know what you're saying, I'm just wondering if it's going to walk, but, uh, this, this, a number of years ago, we did the left side of this building, and at that time, we did look into the lower right-hand side. Um, since then, it appears it's, it's really starting to, for true, uh, part of it is will be the relocation of the glass wall, uh, to try and compact the slope, and the removal, there's a set of stuff there which had not been used in a long time. The walls will be removed.
That wall should have been replaced two years ago.
It is, though, we try to expect it, but before it gets any worse, I've heard some of them.
Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Anything else under Building and Grounds, Director, question? No, that's all, sir. Special Education Director Zaleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. N one, to the members of the Board of Directors, the Special Education Committee hereby recommends the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the school district of the City of Scranton is subject to the administration proceedings in a civil suits within the appropriateness of a student's special education program has been challenged, or suits have been filed in ODR number one-six-six-nine-one-dash-one-five-one-six-A-S and ODR number one-seven-three-one-zero-dash-one-five-dash-one-six, and whereas the parties have reached a settlement agreement in the matter upon the terms and conditions previously provided for your consideration, therefore be resolved that the settlement as indicated above be approved upon the terms and conditions as described, and the Superintendent or the Director of Special Education is hereby authorized to execute any or all documents necessary to consummate the matters, respectfully submitted.
Seven. You're in the second, under the question. Now, you're in question, roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Lesh?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
N two, to the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with Swit Stevens, Cassie Williams, Al Al P as a resource for special education consultant and training as previously provided for your review, respectfully submitted.
Second. You're in the second, under the question. No question, roll call.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.